Hello, welcome to another episode of Shawt on the Scene Podcast. Today, we have a special guest who's no stranger to the podcast as one of our original guests we had on here last year. I want to welcome the county commissioner from Mecklenburg County, Yvette
Townsend Ingram.
How you doing today?
Yes, I'm great.
Thanks for coming back.
I'm excited to be back.
It's good to have you back on here.
I really enjoy it. Actually, I watch you guys. I'm a fan.
Okay, okay, that's what's up. We got fans. We got, Mama Love, you hear that? We got some fans. She been getting on us. Why's everything been going?
Everything is going well. So, I got sworn in.
Awesome, awesome.
December 2nd.
Okay.
So, been on the job almost two months now.
Mm-hmm.
Um, went to my first budget retreat, but everything from the onboarding, like my colleagues, there's nine of us, right?
Okay.
And everything's been great. I feel like this is where I'm supposed to be doing.
Okay, awesome, awesome. What, um, what, how'd you feel when you found that you actually got elected? What was going through your mind?
You know, the funny thing was because I won the primary and I didn't have an opponent in the general, uh, an opponent in the general election. So, all of the work that I put in to campaigning was actually for Vice President Kamala Harris. So, it was kind of bittersweet for me because I knew I had won the election. And matter of fact, I had to have my mentor and friend in my chair called me. He texted me and he was like, "Oh, my goodness, your showing was so great." I didn't even know. I didn't watch the returns for myself. And I literally shut down for three days when she lost the election. I just shut down. Because to me, that meant that this world was what we kept saying it wasn't. Like, we are the United States of America. I wa- I was pretty devastated, but I have now, since I've turned the page, put back on that optimism and that positivity. But, um, yeah, I, I, I'm excited about the fact that I won the election, um, that so many voters showed up for me. Matter of fact, I got more votes in Mecklenburg County than our Vice President did.
Oh.
That kind of messed with me for a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But, yeah, she got like 375,000. I got over 400,000.
Oh, wow.
So, thank you, Mecklenburg County, you know, Charlotte, the nine towns. I truly thank you.
They showed up. That's, 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 I never, that's, that's a fun fact.
Yeah, that's a fun fact. That's a fun fact.
It's a, it's a, it's kind of, it's good for, you know, um, on the flip side, you know, um, but wow, that's, that's, that's wow. So, so you shut down for three days. Now, what was your, your first day getting on the job and going and putting, putting in that, you know, saying, "Okay, finally, I gotta put these boots up and achieve, achieve this agenda we're trying to do"? What, what, how'd that feel when the first day, first day getting to work?
You kind of have to reset.
Did you, oh, did you wear Timberlands?
I did not wear Timber.
Okay, okay, let's make sure.
Or my, or my Chucks.
Okay, okay, all the Chucks, okay, okay. Talk to me nice.
But, you know, everybody was great. It mostly, and it still is, me learning. It's a lot of learning. You know, you just can't jump in, whereas, you know, before, um, on the advocate side of being a, a community leader, you're used to doing something, you write it down, you put your mind to it, you have a strategy, you get your group of people together and you go and you get it done.
Gotcha.
Things work a little bit differently in government.
Yeah.
You have one vote. Um, I am the newest person on the board, so I have to get, you know, I got my assignments for the committees that I'm on. You know, I was consulted with which ones I wanted to be on, but that is determined based upon seniority and what the chair needs at the time, my county commission chair. So, I'm excited about it. I'm happy about it. I'm happy to learn. I'm a lifelong learner. I love anything education. I can find a lesson in everything, even the most negative thing. I can find a lesson there to take with you because else it's wasted, right? You gotta find the lesson in it.
Well, well, also too, I mean, you know, just, just being, you know, just being able to be at, go in at politics and, and be somewhere at the ground floor and learn as you go. It's, it's, it's an opportunity that a lot of us, you know, um, wish we could afford to, you know, some of us do, you know, meaning, um, to be able to have a voice to start at that level and try to make a difference and move forward. I definitely want to touch on, and I don't want to jump into it.
No, go ahead. Jump, let's jump. Head first.
But we, since you mentioned Kamala, and that's how it's supposed to be pronounced, Kamala.
Yes, Saurav Kamala.
Yes. Okay, okay, yeah, okay, 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 divine eye. Talk to me nice. I forgot about that, okay? So, how did you feel, what was going through your mind during election, during election night, when, you know, we, when we, uh, had the results and, um, and the results came in? And, um, I know there was a lot of anticipation of, of her actually, you know, achieving and winning. But how did you feel? What was going through your mind? And, and I know you mentioned, you say you're supposed to be in, in a country of one America, you know, one United States, whatever, you know, so.
It, it just, quite frankly, I, I, and I'm, I'm not ashamed to admit this, I was totally blown away. I truly thought that you have a, a black woman who is intelligent. She has worked at every level of government, like literally every level of government. And then you have someone with 34 felony convictions, not that he was being accused, he had convictions. So, surely, you know, I was mad about the fact that that's who you're gonna put up to run against. So, in my mind, and I was literally campaigning and telling people on the street when I was uptown Charlotte, "No, we got this. We got this. Please be encouraged. Don't think that." And so, I had the total optimism. I was totally sold out that, I mean, I'm making plans for how I'm gonna get to the inauguration and see Saurav, President Kamala Harris. So, as the night started and I went to a watch party, you know, there were all these watch parties all over Charlotte, and I went to the one at the Nile with the International Minority Coalition where I'm a board member.
Okay.
Went to that one and as soon as the returns started, it's like, okay, and it's early. And then you start looking at, you know, you're, I'm, I'm a former campaign manager, so I'm hitting refresh, refresh on the election returns. I'm watching this one particular station. We've got different ones. How many states have come in? And, and as around 10 o'clock, the mood totally shifted. I just wanted to go home. So, I went home and I, I shut down. I didn't watch anything else because by 10 o'clock, I knew that she had lost the election.
Yeah, it was, uh, people were, um, uh, sharing the same sentiment. People were watching the election and I knew at a certain time that it was kind of when she lost a certain amount of states, um, the way, the way the projection was going, yeah. The way the projection was going, it wasn't gonna, people were like, "No, she could bounce", but I was like, "You really don't", you know, a lot of people don't really, uh, not really into politics and don't really watch it or haven't watched past elections and the projections and how, how they go. So, you know, me, I'm, you know, just like you are, I'm kind of a student of that stuff. Um, and, um, I saw at a certain time, I was like, "No, this is not, this is not gonna, this is not gonna go our way." I will say, do you think, um, and you're free to answer if you don't, if you want to or not, but do you feel as if it was maybe, what do you think shifted people's minds? Especially, you know, I guess, uh, why she didn't get, wasn't able to pull out the vote?
You know, like I said, in Mecklenburg County, and we worked very hard. I had, I worked with the Center for Common Ground, um, out of Virginia. There were different organizations because as Mecklenburg County goes, we're the most densely populated Democratic county in North Carolina of all of the 100 counties. So, as Mecklenburg County goes, so goes a lot of time the rest of the state. And so, we worked really hard, but she didn't even get as many votes as, you know, Joe Biden got. And, and we have a, a, you know, a pretty good number of African Americans. So, in my mind, this country is still very misogynistic.
Okay.
It's a patriarchal society. I don't think, you know, they didn't want Hillary Clinton. You think that you've progressed and they didn't want Kamala Harris. And I think it was the fact that she was a woman first and then she was a black woman.
Okay.
Quite honestly.
Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna talk saucy. We're gonna continue on. I'm sorry, I don't like being fake. We gotta take a break in a mission. You can put in a thing. I don't care. Ma'am, 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 Aunt Moore would just step in the building, just got the plane. What's up, baby? How you doing, man?
What's going on, brother? I ain't get off the plane, man. We, we played our, our first, we played our conference game tonight.
Okay.
And we lost to Chambers, but you got a lot to look forward to with the guys from Harding High School.
That's what's up, man.
Thank you, mama. Gotta come to a game next year.
You know what? I taught at Harding High School.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Wow.
My mom went to, well, she went to Wes Mc, but, um, my aunts went to Harding, but yeah.
I taught for like a couple of years, yeah. I was there floating back and forth. Man, high school teaching, that's, it's not my, that's not my, yeah, it's not my ministry.
It's all good. Stressed out.
West Boulevard District.
So, we were, we were talking, but hold up, Aunt walked in here, just wanted to say, Aunt, I mean, you know, don't, don't feel funny about this, you know? You know, but kind of colonial, you got. What you wearing?
I tell you all family, I stop playing with you.
Aunt up here, where, where, where?
It's a new joint too, man. I'ma show you.
It better, it better not be no oils from Brick City in Newark or nothing like that.
No, it is. It is, hey, Mama Love, I got oils, I got an oil on right now. And you like oils, right?
I like.
You enjoy oils.
You like oils, right?
I wear Golden Sands.
You like them?
I love.
Yeah, I got some, I got something special, bro. I don't know what it is.
Yeah, yeah, smell, let me guys smell the paws, no, you know what I mean?
I mean, the lot comes from y'all, man. Paws, yeah, yeah. But not.
It don't smell like Egyptian musk. I know, but that's, but that's.
See, I don't be knowing, bro.
It smells like Egyptian musk.
I can't do Egyptian musk. I can't do it. I got a man at a flea market I can tell you about with the oils.
Oh, word?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we, I'll let him.
Oh, let me know, yeah.
Aladdin, down at, uh, Fort Mill.
Oh, the Ford Mill Flea Market over there by, right in the Pineville?
Yeah, man.
Yeah, I know where it is.
Yep. I've been going to him for years.
Oh, word? He's, he's there every Saturday?
Yeah.
Right near the liquor store. I know, I know exactly what you're talking about.
Yep.
That's right near the crib.
He used to live, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Fort Mill.
I'm still there, still there. Still there where I wanna be, anyway. Drop the babies off. So, let me get back on focus. So, uh, Aunt, we, uh, recap, we, we talked about, you know, uh, the elections and, um, Kamala. Uh, we talked about, uh, um, um, Miss Yvette, uh, getting, getting, I know she don't like to be called Miss Yvette, but I'm, I'll, I'll, you know? But, uh, you know, we talked about her, uh, getting elected and her first day and on the job and, you know, and, um, and everything else. She didn't bring her Chucks or her Timberlands. She, you know, she, she, she went and.
I wore my Chucks. I wore, you know, I represented well.
Awesome, awesome, awesome.
That's a fact.
Awesome. So, so I want to get into, so like, so like the, the, the political climate right now, we talked about it a little bit right now. It's very, it's very, um, I want to say, it's very, very, very scary.
It's scary.
And, um, I, I usually don't, you know, like this, like you said, so one thing I want to tell the audience, when we were talking before we got on, you know, I try to keep the show politically, politically free, me and Aunt do, and, um, and Cousin L. And, uh, we had to, uh, she, uh, Miss Yvette said, uh, "People say that, but it's never that. It's never politically free." And she's absolutely right, you know what I mean? Absolutely right. I totally agree.
We're dealing with life issues. So, I'm not a, you know, they say, because that's what it is, political science, you know, you deal with the numbers of how to get there. Most people don't think about that part. But truly, we deal with life issues. I deal with, um, housing. And, you know, someone calling me saying that they're having trouble, um, you know, finding a place to live and they're living out of their car. I deal with, um, you know, I, I call him Papi. He's Afro-Latino, Dominican, from the Dominican Republic. And, um, he's living in these apartments and one day he called and they're like, "They towed my car." So, you know, I'm dealing on the fly with things, life issues, um, food insecurity. Right now, meeting with, um, Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools, who I have to give a shout out to, um, Dr. Hill and to our new State Superintendent, Mo Green. They came and they talked to us, the county commission, and they talked to, um, a group of, uh, of other black leaders about the immigration, right? And, and protecting our most vulnerable children. That's a concern for me.
So, so when you say that, so what are we talking? Are we talking, um, or talking, I think, I believe we're talking ISIS?
Yeah.
ICE, ICE, I'm sorry, ICE going in.
Because of these executive orders that this administration has put down, you know? There's these, we have minorities, we have immigrants who are frightened. They don't want to go to work. They don't want to send those kids to school because they're afraid that they will just be taken.
They just gonna come get them.
They just gonna come get them, right? These are life issues. These are things, you know, I have many immigrant friends. So, you know, if they call me, I gotta be ready with the answer. I can't hem and haw and be like, yeah. So, we gotta know, okay, if this happens, this is what you do. You do A, B, and C. And that's what Dr. Hill gave me, you know, she, she broke it down. This is not something new that CMS is dealing with, immigration. This is something that has been amplified because of this administration. But there are procedures. They're not just gonna come and snatch your child out of school. They can't do that. You know, she did say that they have to have a warrant in order to come to the school, but the teacher is not gonna have to look at a warrant and say, "Oh, you know, is this right?" or whatever. They have processes and procedures, so your children are safe. That's what I want to get out to the community. And these are things that, you know, most families don't have time to go to the meetings that I go to. So, how do I get that information to people who are already afraid to be, you know, seen and heard and they don't want to go through official channels? How do I get that information to them? How do I know that, you know, they have a safe place to live? That they're not cold, that their family's being fed? Those are things that concern the Board of County Commission.
Got you.
Can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
So, like, and I'm kind of paraphrasing, but Trump was documenting and getting everybody to get, like, um, I guess citizenship. He was saying he was doing it. But he, was it really him just trying to find out where they at so he could go take the kids and deport people?
Yes. I will say that anything that this administration has done.
That's crazy.
Has been to stir up as much chaos, fear, and, and pandemonium as possible. They put out false information. They put out propaganda and they use the social media platforms to do that. Elon Musk admitted to it as he gave a press conference in the Oval, from the Oval Office.
Saw that.
With his son with him. He said, "I'm not gonna get everything right. There are things that I got wrong. Yeah, no, I got that wrong. Oops, my bad."
And that's it.
You don't want "oops, my bad" from your government, right?
We cannot have that.
You can't have that, so.
It's been the administration's.
You know, how would that look? I'd look absolutely crazy if somebody asked me a question about housing or their child and I say, "Oops, my bad. That wasn't, you know?"
Yeah, that'd be crazy.
So, yeah, there's a lot, but what I, what I want people to, to focus on is not the national stuff. They're gonna do, they're gonna do their stuff. They're gonna do all kinds of things and there's gonna be stuff in the news daily. I had to turn my phone off. I had to turn off my news alerts.
Right.
You focus on local. If, if it affects you personally, then we locally want to know about it.
Right.
If it is something concerning the state of North Carolina or the federal government, I don't want you to focus on that, truly. We do need to be in the know. But if it's something concerning your housing, your food, your employment, your children and their education, or our seniors, because we need a lot of adult daycare. That's another priority that we're getting to. That's what we're concerned about. That's what I want you to focus on. Focus on your everyday.
Well, you know what, so I, when you were talking earlier, well, when, when you talk, I always, you know, always taking in, um, affordability of housing, you know what I mean? And I'm kind of on the, I'm on the South Carolina side of Fort Mill, but I just realized, you know, like I'm moving, probably moving in, I have a place in Charlotte now, Mecklenburg County, and affordability is just through the roof. Like, this is, this is, it's just, it's just not what it was when I moved here 10 years ago. I understand things progress. I know things, you know, things are gonna go up.
A hundred, 121 people a day move to Mecklenburg County.
Right.
All right, dog, stop coming here.
Well, see, that, that, no, no.
We fooled, we fooled, bro.
Well, see, that's a good point. Aunt, you hit on, you hit on a good point.
Good lord.
So, so, the, I, I think the charlatanian's mentality is to stop coming here, but you gotta understand, if you have people coming here, it's driving the economy, it's making the economy better. It's driving, it's driving the price up, you know what I mean? Like, you want people to come here because it's making the city bigger and, uh, I think, you know, I, I think that's, that's a plus, right? But at the end of the day, it's the Charlotte that you grew up in is not the Charlotte, Charlotte it's gonna be now or going forward.
They ain't building fast enough.
But how can we still, the, the question is, how can we still make it affordable for people to live in? Because I think now, like you, like, you know, when I first got here, a, a, a town, a three-story townhome was going for 150. Now, now a three-story townhome is going for 6, 700 in certain, in, in a lot of areas, a lot of areas. Then, 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 you know, your, your four, your four or five bedrooms are going for anywhere from 600, 600, 700,000 to over a mil.
A mil, yeah.
Over a mil.
That was a fact.
And, and, and then, and then what the, the big thing that I see is that if you go over by West Charlotte, if you go over, if you're in East Charlotte, you go in these little divots where they're re, they're zoning off and rebuilding a lot. Even where my cigar lounge was on Morehead, they're, they're, they're putting up new, modern homes in these neighborhoods. And they price, they're pricing them out. And, you know, and it's good, it's, and they're driving, of course, they're driving the smaller, the older people who's lived there for years, who built the community over years.
They call it urban renewal.
Oh, come on. We went through that in Brooklyn, we went through that and, you know, I think the only person, the only place that's going through it right now is Gary Indian. I don't think they're ever gonna go through it, but that's a little shot.
Gary Indian?
That's a little shot, yeah. Gary Indian.
All right, be careful.
It's not gonna happen. It's not gonna happen.
Hey.
You can get a house in Garrett.
The historical neighborhoods.
West Virginia.
West, West Virginia too, yep.
I hate to say it, my hometown.
West Virginia too.
Yeah.
West Virginia too. So, but like, how, like, how do we combat that?
So, this is what you have to do. I said turn off stuff, but this, things that affect you, you have to know, first of all, know who your representatives are.
Right.
Um, I can take you to a website where you can find out, no matter your state, but particularly for North Carolina, for Mecklenburg, you can know who your school board member is, know who your county commissioners are, what district. Because I represent at large, so that means I have the whole county, but you have districts.
That was a life flex.
We district 12, I think we from. That is a big time. That's big time.
That's a flex, yeah.
That was a flex, go ahead. Talk, talk to me nice, but go ahead, good.
Glad you recognized me. But, so you need to know your representatives and then you need to tell them what your needs are. First of all, yes, it's great that the city is growing.
Yes.
And that, you know, we're moving on, but the, the salaries have not kept up. Wages have not kept up.
There you go.
That's why they're not affordable.
Yep.
Affordable is relevant.
Right.
Talk to me nice.
Facts.
So.
She preaching.
You know, I've been doing this for a while in the community.
So, basically, the wages, the wages are not, they're not matching.
To, to, to afford a two-bedroom apartment in Mecklenburg County, you pretty much have to be making $22 an hour. Eighty-eight, or about $80,000 a year to live comfortably. I heard an estimate yesterday that was a hundred thousand.
It's a hundred.
I, I don't even make a hundred thousand. I have not yet in my career made a hundred thousand.
But you know, but you know what, though? People like us, we, we went to, we, 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 uh, we, we figure things out. We know how to cut. We know how to cut the corners.
Listen, talk about it. I told people, listen, I am from the make do. We are make do people. You, you figure out a way to make do with, and, and there's a, there's a security in being raised up that way.
Yes, there is. Because you know, because you know, when things, times get tough.
When times get tough, you don't fall apart.
This might be against the law. I'm gonna tell you something. When I was in college, you know, disclaimer, I think, I think the, 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 the.
The laws.
Laws of time is up.
Right.
Stat limitations is up.
That's just a limitation, that's it.
But, but man, I had, I had, I had, I had, I was in my one-bedroom apartment in Morgan State and I actually, uh, didn't pay my, uh, my power bill, my BGNE bill. It was Baltimore Gas Electric. I was late on it. It cut me off. So, I went home to Jersey. I got my mom's three-prong extension cord. Cable was still on. That's how bad my priorities were at the time. So, the cable was still working. I'm still getting showtime.
Everybody had cable then.
You can't get the cable if you.
Well, you, well, you. Right. You go, bam, bam. That's, that's where, now you're, now you're there.
Now you're there.
Now you're there. So.
What year was that?
Because obviously, I've been there with you, right?
This is like, this is like 2000 and like, what, seven, six, maybe five? Because I think it was, I was watching, I was trying to get this boxing fight. So, I ca, I got my three-pronged fight and I ran, I ran, I ran, I had, I plugged the cable box into the one pro, the, the one outlet, the lamp into the other outlet, and I opened my door, cracked my door and I ran, I did your cord right through the hallway. It was outlet right there. I had to get up 5:00 every morning to pull it out, make sure the maintenance wouldn't see it. Nobody would trip over it, but that's, but it was surviving.
Bro, we all done stole cable before, man. It's okay.
Stole cable, electric, everything.
Electric. We figured out the water thing one year. I was like, that's crazy.
You figured the water thing?
Yeah.
She was like.
I don't know how we did that.
She was like, "My husband got the little thing where you can go down and turn the water back on after this."
Yeah, my dad showed me how to do that. Child pops. I ain't tripping, bro. 30 years ago or something. I'm cool.
That was a long time. Stat limitations up.
But seriously, these are things that, um, and I, I even said that to a group of, of, uh, of folks that I was speaking to. It was like, you know, Native Americans and black people were kind of resilient like that in that, you know, there's been a lot thrown at us through the years and we've tried to, we've had to figure out how to make things work without resources, without having this or that, so we don't panic.
Yeah.
Now, I will say that this generation of black folk, we that bougie type that we, you know, so, you know, we're, it's, it's like we're regressing back. But like my sorority sister, Coretta Scott King said.
Okay.
Freedom.
Ooh, flex.
Freedom is never really, you have to win it in every new generation. So, you know, we had those that went through segregation. We had those that went through Jim Crow. We had those that went through apartheid. And this is our apartheid. This is our new thing now. This is what black people are gonna have to, so are, we're gonna have to teach our younger ones, hey, this is what happens. You know, freedom is never really, you, you cannot give up on democracy. Say, "We want it. We want freedom and now we're good."
Well, see, we're, we're about, we're about to go into a deep, deep conversation. I want to keep it, I don't go too deep in that. Yeah, keep it fresh. But you're 100% right. I, I agree with you 100%. And I, well, I will, I will, I will say this. I feel like when a handful of us feel like we've made it, uh, or when we have it and then we don't, and then we're saying, "We got it and that's it." And we don't want to sit here, like, if you ever look, if you ever look at the struggle of our people, there's always a hand bringing you up.
That's right.
And, um, and, and you got, you gotta reach back. And sometimes, you know, like, yeah, your tax bracket might be, you might vote a certain party, political party or whatever, but how did you get there? You had people that built you up. I watched a documentary last night on, on Richard Pryor. He was born in, in Peoria.
Yeah.
He was born in Peoria, Illinois. And, um, if it wasn't for, uh, he, he, he went to this, just, I think it was George Carver Performance School of Arts. If it wasn't for this person that groomed him and, and how he was trying to do comedy, he, he could have went e, e, either way.
Right.
Yeah.
He could have went either way, you know what I'm saying? Because he was, I mean, he was violent, very violent a person, you know, we, we, you know, we all have our things, you know, we all have our things, vices, but, but he, but, you know, but he, he was a genius at what he did, but he had somebody actually hone his skill. And, and, and the thing is with, with, with a lot of African Americans is that when we feel we get to one place, there's no hand to bring us back up or to say, "How can we, I can make your skill, help you with your skill and refine it better." Something like Mark Jarrell did, right?
Yes.
So.
The OG.
And you know what? And Mark told me that it was Miss Sarah, hey, Miss Sarah, Miss Sarah Jarrell that taught him that. His mom. She's also my church member at friendship. But, you know, yeah, we, we have to have those people who are able to, even when we mess up, like you said, you know, we might go off the beaten path. Someone who was able to gently bring us back and, and, and say, "Hey, don't forget yourself."
Yes.
You know, you know, we from that old school, you know, you, you told me where you from, you know, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Have those people like Commissioner Lee, you know, that'll, that'll gently tell you, "Hey, what's going on there? Bring you back to the center." And I have those people in my life. And matter of fact, I asked them, "Look, if you see me doing something left of center, out there, um, please snatch me."
Pull me back in.
I'm okay with, with elders snatching my edges. I really am.
Well, you, well, you, well, you know, well, you know what, sometimes though, you know, if you, you will find out your true, your true friends.
That's right.
And your true people, when they spring, they bring you back in, some would just let you walk off the cliff.
That's right.
And, uh, and so, you know, you, 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 you'll learn, you'll learn in that time, evolve, I've been in the pasture. You ever watch Martin Lawrence Show with Gina Blakey, Martin, you was gone, you was out there.
Fortunate to, to, to have those people around me, um, you know, I was telling you how I got to, and I believe these things happen for a reason, like I had my dorm fees and to go to Marshall University, but, um, my grandfather had a best friend, and he was, you know, graduated from West Virginia State University.
That's our tall chapter.
But he, he was like, wait a minute, and I was gonna have, you know, they were trying to figure out on a coal miner salary, how they were gonna pay for my tuition at Marshall, oh, wait a minute, let me get you a full ride academic scholarship to an HBCU where you will be nurtured and brought up, and so, um, you know, those type of people in your life, and you have to now be that person, I wanna be that person for several, several young people. I wanna pay it forward.
Did you always know you wanted to go to HBCU at first, or did you?
I didn't know, I, I had no idea, I just knew I was going to college. That was it, um, and I am the only one of my siblings who went to college, my grandparents drilled it into me.
So you're a first generation. So let's, let's get on that, so, being a first generation college grad, and the prices of raising tuition. Tuitions are high right now. What, what is your opinion on that, and would you, would you, okay, would you, would you, would you advise a younger person to go to college, and if they were going to incur all of that, all the, all those debt, all that debt at early age?
So, I have two sons, thirty-two and, um, twenty-one. Both of them had their moments where they were like, we ain't going to college, they were like, you got three degrees and you, you can't keep a job.
You look thirty-two, by the way.
Well, seriously, when my boy said that to me, it was sobering, they were like, we don't wanna go to college? You always stay laid off, you got three degrees, what has it got, and you know, we stay stuck here. So, I had to rethink that thing, you know, I had to think, cause I, I, I did kind of have this bougie attitude of, no, you're going to college, and you know, only, that's the only way you are successful is you have to go to, I have totally given about faced with that, there are so many ways that you can earn a living now through trades. You know, like I said, I taught in CMS for two years, understanding, everybody's not meant to go to college, wasting somebody's, uh, money. You're wasting your mama's money, you know you don't wanna go to college, so, there are so many trades and, and, and things that you can go to, particularly in Mecklenburg, and we wanna, we wanna focus on that, right? I want as many young people, especially, and I'm a boy mom, so, you know, it's making sure our young men have those opportunities that it's put right there in their face, and they have no excuse, you, you don't have a way to get there, we gonna find you a way to get there every Sunday. So, no, I would not, I would not be as stringent, now, if there's something you know you want to do, we gonna find a way to pay for college.
I be saying that, not to cut you off, I, I say that all the time, I'm like, if I'd have known what I know now, I went to Georgia Tech, I mean, it was cool, but I played basketball, you know what I'm saying, but, I wish I could've just learned what I wanted to do after basketball, knew basketball was gonna be straight, whether I went overseas or played NBA. But, I wanted to learn a trade in college.
Yeah.
And it's like, I had to take world history and all this stuff, and I'm like, I don't even know, I don't care about this, like, no disrespect to world history majors or experts.
One of my degrees in history, talk, talk to me nice, but go ahead, I'm listening.
I had, well, congrats to you, no disrespect, my brother. Yeah, I really wanted to just go to school for what I wanted to learn for after basketball, so like, a lot of kids now, they just learn the trades, which is cool, cause we all need trades, like electricity, whatever.
That's what we were saying in last episode, I was saying, you can get a trade, but just learn, have a, I would say, I always say, take a business course.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
Whenever you go on a trade. Whatever you go into, my mom, so, I tell you what my mom did, and, and it's a little different, so my mom had her degree, she worked in corporate America for umpteen years, now she's a nurse, she's an ER nurse, she, she went and got her masters in nursing, right? Um, but what she did, what she told me when I went to college, she was like, look, I said, look, I wanna go to college for history, cause that's, that's what I'm good at, I'm a creative, I'm not like a technical guy. You know, but I'm, I'm, I'm a good creative, I feel, that's my skill set, right, as you get older, you know your skill set, as you know yourself, right?
Yeah.
And, um, and, um, she was like, well, I'm not paying for that, I'm paying for you to be a lawyer, doctor, or you go on the computer.
These are my.
These are my criteria, and I'm only paying for if you go for this, so, of course, so you have to go to college, she said, because I'm not gonna sit here and pull this money into you. And, you know, so what happened was, I was in computer science program at Morgan forever, dealing, trying to pass calc two, calc three, and math classes that I, but, brings through history, you got my degree, I started to get my, finish my, 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 my rec and comp sci, but, I realized, and, 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 and I'm, and that's what I do today, I'm in IT, but, I will say that I think you, we will have a better result with our youth if we push them to what their skill set is, and what they can do, and just make sure they have, they know how to run the business side.
Yeah.
And so, that's why we're trying now to get them to understand earlier, like, in, cause, cause there are classes, you can take college classes now in high schools. So like, there are colleges that.
My daughter's doing so.
Middle colleges and that kind of thing, but, I mean, teaching them from middle school on, what are, what is it that moves you, what is it that motivates you, you know, we have things now, like, um, North Mecklenburg, there was, my son was on the automotive track, learning about that, so he could've graduated with like certifications, come out of high school, got another little certification at CPCC, making sixty to eighty thousand dollars a year.
That's big time.
That's big time, right?
Especially at that age.
So, there are opportunities now that we know about.
Yeah, I bet they had that then, like, I didn't get a job till I was in college, and it was at Tech Square, like, right, at Georgia Tech's campus, but I was working for like this CEO guy over there, and I'm like, I'm gonna do what you do. He was like, you gonna play basketball, I'm like, I still wanna do what you do, you know what I'm saying, like, how do you do, what do I need to major in, type, you know what I mean? And I thank God I did that, because he had a lot of knowledge for me, and when I chose my major, science, technology, and culture, with an English focus. So like, yeah, it was a lot, and it's just like, why y'all didn't just teach me what I need to know? Like, what if I don't make the NBA, what if I don't go overseas?
Cause you know what, a lot of young brothers now, they want that money fast.
Well, they get NIL deals now, so it's different now, right, so like, you, you, if you go to college now, you get a, you get an NIL deal, it's different, like, we, like, if, if, if if Ant would've hurt himself in college, it'd have been over, you know what I'm saying, whereas, he had, he had no other choice, whereas, now, these guys are going into their freshman years, making, 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 making more than what we go to college for, you know?
I would've stayed at college six, seven years. I don't even gotta go to the league, just keep getting degrees and staying there. Y'all would've had a two point five me.
So, what are your degrees in, if you don't mind me asking, you, 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 you went to JCSU, right? Where'd you go to school? Okay, you worked there, okay, I thought you went there, I apologize. So you'll strike that from the record.
So I went to HBCU, West Virginia State University.
I know you went there, I thought, I thought you went there too.
Then I went to Strayer University and Walden University, so, I am, I have completed all but the dissertation for a doctorate in business administration.
Oh, wow, okay, okay, okay.
Y'all hear that?
Never light flex.
Another light flex, that's a big flex.
With the caveat that I have never made probably more than eighty thousand dollars a year.
But, but you, but you know what, but you know what, what I will say about this, and I'm gonna move on, I will say, I will say this, sometimes with, I think with certain, with certain, um, professions, they don't pay, they don't pay as much, but I can tell you, you're, 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 and I, I just, you know, I, I've known you now for, for, you know, about two years now, your impact and what you're doing is worth more sometimes than money.
Oh, yeah.
And, um, and, and, and your arms and your reach is, is a lot more, and sometimes, you know, I'll always, I always learn, my mom always had me, you know, she took me to go, um, she's always big in Egyptian culture, and Egyptians used to bury their gold with them, right? What you, what you're doing, and what you're on a path to doing, and what you already done, your legacy is, is, is being solidified. Your goal, your goal, you, you can't, you know, you don't need the intrinsic values of things, what you're gonna, they're gonna read about you in the books.
I appreciate that, my brother, that, that's very encouraging.
Definitely.
But, and it, and it really does have a lot to do with the path that I wa- I have always been in the services, I don't know, I can't, even when I graduated from college, I started working for Department of Health and Human Resources. I was barely making above the amount that would allow me to get the benefits that I was. That I was giving out, so I've always been in like the service industry, had I gone into deep into corporate and that kind of thing. Um, you know, I've had a couple of corporate jobs, but it just, it was not me, I could not put my soul into that. And I need to get up every morning and feel confident and excited about what I'm doing, and I thank God that I'm doing that now.
Purpose.
Purpose.
A, a lot of people don't have the fortitude, or the guts, or the, or the, or the, or the, or the moxie to get up and do what you, and do what you're doing, so, you know, hats off to you, I just wanna tell you that, I just wanna give you, I would give you a flower, sis, you know what I mean?
You are important, you have no, your impact, as, like you said, as a black woman, you know, it's certainly like glass ceiling sometimes. As a black man too, but, as a black woman, it's like, it ain't fair that people get put in these. Yeah, they get put in these boxes, and they, they gonna, they, they try to stop, but, all the little girls and little black boys and little black girls see what you doing. And the new generation is gonna take, pass, you pass that baton on to them, and they'll take it to another level.
That's my whole point.
That's service, that's purpose right there.
I tell you something all day, man, I used to watch my mom, my mom worked for World, my, my mom worked for American Express, she was in, she was never an engineer back in the eighties. She worked for World, American Express, Port Authority, she was there when, when the planes, when the bombing happened, took the day off. My mom worked for a lot of top companies, and she went and got her second degree in nursing, she found a purpose, she like, she's an ER nurse, she likes what she does, she's, she was in corporate before, she was a corporate, she used to have a car come to our house in Jersey and pick, and pick her up and take us to Manhattan. That's unheard of, uh, you know, back in those days, I didn't know, I was a little kid, I was just like, alright, I don't care. You know what I'm saying, and now she serves as an ER nurse, she caught COVID during the height of it, and, we don't, you know, like, there's a big thing in doing jobs in corporate, but that's everything with doing jobs in service.
That's right.
And, and serving people, and.
That's life work, man.
Yes, yes.
Very much life work, and you know what, when, when we think back on, that's how I wanna be remembered, like, I don't wanna be remembered as, oh, she, yeah, I want generational wealth for my family. But, when you think back to Yvette Townsend Ingram, I don't want it to be connected to, oh, she was the CEO of this or that, I want them to say, she was an entrepreneur who did this community work, and
Right.
she blazed this trail for, you know, um, like the Ella Scarboroughs, who has buildings named after because she fought for this community. Like, there are so many, like, I literally sat, you should also watch Tuesday Morning Forum.
Okay, yeah, check it out.
Tuesday.
Tuesday Morning Forum, Sarah Stevenson, that was another trailblazer, she just recently passed away. But I was literally sitting in the audience, watching living legends, Mel Watts, um,
Shout out to OG.
James Ferguson, and Geraldine Sumter, talking about Julius Chambers, who now has a high school named after him, right?
They beat us today. Just had to bring that up. Not happy about it, but it's alright.
But he was this civil rights attorney that was huge, did this, the first black business building, you know, and he blazed all these trails, and, and Mel Watts was telling us about how he, at the time that he took this, um, case for, um, for Stevie Wonder, who got hit from behind while he was driving through South Carolina, I mean, you know, stuff like that, these are living civil rights legends, and I get to speak to them.
Yeah. Beautiful school.
Just beautiful school, but even still, our kids now, how, how great would it be if our black children, boys and girls, knew the legacy of West Charlotte High School and the integration that it played, and um, Miss, um, she, there's a building named after her in Har- at Harding. And I can't think of her name right now, she's a Delta, but anyway, I think that it would encourage our young people, if they know these people are still living, and they did this stuff, man, back when, you know, it was hard, that this was not done with black people, but they did it so that you could sit where you're sitting now, I think that there would be more meaning to them, and they would like, have more pride in their education.
It's so important to really know the history of, it's so many like, black people that did so much stuff in Charlotte. That I had to learn, like, my mom used to make me go to the air, I mean, to the, to the library, and like, go look up where they from.
Yes.
You know?
I, I'm still learning.
Yeah, I'm like.
Almost thirty years now, and I'm still learning, like, every day, I literally learn something else about some great black person, and what's wonderful is, a lot of them are still living.
They still here, you know?
Yeah, I, I, um, I, um, I will tell you, um, that, I think, I think the issue is, is a generational thing, I think, I don't think, I've seen it, I know. Uh, going out a lot, and hanging out sometimes or whatever, I see that there's no respect for the past generation. Um, especially with this generation, and I'll say it, I might get beat up for it or whatever, but, but, um, I gotta, I gotta, I gotta say it, because, because you know what, like, there was a time when I grew up, when I knew about, I knew about Marvin Gaye, I knew, I knew about, um, uh, uh, Major Harris, I knew, I knew about, I knew about, uh, James Ingram, I knew about all these, these older, these older people from the eighties, seventies, and, and, and sixties, who had, who did music, cause we were doing hip hop, but we were using their music. You see what I'm saying, we had to, so we had to know their music to make, to make our music.
That's right.
Now, it's like, there's none of that, there's no, there's, there's, there's no respect for the past art form, there's no respect for the past leaders. Um, you have, you do have a, a small, a small percentage.
It's like the R and B singers use more of the samples now, whereas it was more of the hip hop artists.
Yes, well, the hip hop artists used the R and B samples, yes, 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 definitely, but, but that's, I mean, the most sample, I mean, the most sampled person of all time was, was one of the most prolific. No, no, James Brown, James Brown, James Brown. Jimi Hendrix, I mean, these, these guys, I mean, I mean, James Brown threw a, uh, threw a concert, um, 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 uh, 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 during, during the, uh, the riots, um, and it was, it was huge, I mean, but these guys, but you gotta understand too, it was a different time, but like, so now, it's like, I will look at the All-Star game, right, and, and what happened during Super Bowl with Kendrick, whatever, not to get into it, I'm just I'm trying to build everything together, building together, what I'm trying to say is this, I didn't like the Super Bowl performance, all that great, but I get the message, and back then, in the sixties and seventies, we had to have a message to get our point across. And I get it, and this has not been done in a long time, so we've kind of gotten away from it. Um, we went through civil rights era, you, you had, you had, uh, the Mexico Olympic Games, where they threw the black fist up. You had, you had, um, you, you had, uh, actually NBA players, Bill Russell, uh, Wilt Chamberlain, they all sat out an All-Star game.
Craig Hodges.
Another one's Craig Hodges, like, so you, you've had these protests to show, and to, and, and to show solidarity. And I just feel like, we don't kinda, we, there's so much gaps between us as a people that we kind of say, well, your era is not like my era, my era was this era, my era was this.
You know what it is, they want to just be entertained, they don't wanna think.
That's a fact. Drop that jewel.
They, they really do not wanna think, there was all kinds of messages, and the older generations, like literally Mel Watt, when, you know, who's the older silver what, he was talking about Kendrick Lamar's performance, and all of the messages in it. They don't want to think, they don't want the responsibility of the weight of having to think. Because then that gives you the responsibility to do.
Oh, my God, that's crazy. That's crazy.
Okay.
I'm using that as a caption tonight. They don't want the responsibility to think, cause they don't want the responsibility to do.
That's right.
So, so, so me, I ain't gonna lie, I didn't wanna think during the Super Bowl, and I, and I, and I.
We had this conversation, and he was going in, and I'm like, bro, it ain't about, it's about what he representing.
But see, what I was, but see, what I was more angry about is like, when you have these youngsters who have. The, the thing is, me, don't, don't come to me and act, and tell me I'm not woke, or don't know what's going on, don't, don't, don't do that to me, don't do that to me, because I will, I will I will make you look crazy, you don't know, you don't know your own history, don't, don't do, don't do that with me, you know what I'm saying?
The reason he was mad was because the younger generation was like, it's over your head, they're like, I went to Morgan State. I'm smarter than everybody. You can't tell me nothing, and I'm like, it ain't about that, bro, don't listen to them young dudes, bro, it's okay. I'm like, calm down, bro.
When they jump up and down on that one nerve, they hit that one nerve.
Oh, he turned into the triple OG last episode, he was a triple OG, man, he don't know more than me. I'm trying to chill, bro.
Really, I want, I really want y'all to know that Mecklenburg County, like, I'm, I'm a county commissioner. I truly do, this is the stuff that I've been doing all my life, but now, it's, it's more segmented, it's more regimented. It's more formatted, so, what we need to know is what you guys think, right? In order for me to do my job, I need to know what's most important to you, as in your age, and your group, you know, of young men. You know, for me, I know what's important, but what we've gotten to do, what, what we've got is a survey. So if you go to www.mecnc.gov, and you go to, um, that page, you will see the county, um, budget survey. And we wanna know the things that are important to you, like, what's affecting your life? And we want to know the things that are important to you, like, what's affecting your life.
Can you repeat that?
Oh, yeah, go ahead, yeah.
So, and it's, um, you know, meccnc.gov, go there, there is, um, you know, few buttons you have to click, but it's, we put it prominently there that it's the survey. You can even enter to win a five hundred dollar gift card, if you want to, but you can do it anonymously.
Right.
But if you want the gift cards, you, you can't be anonymous.
I want the gift card. You gonna have my whole name on there.
Option, um, so, what we want to know is what's affecting you from day to day. So, how can we put the money there for the services that is affecting you every day, where are the gaps?
Greg, Rashawn, I'm about to answer that.
Go ahead.
You go first?
I'll let you go first.
Tell me.
Well, I got, I got, um, my foundation, Anthony Morrow Charities dot org online. And, um, I got a great manager, Vina Von, and, um, and she's Dare to Dream, uh, INC on Instagram. But we got like five hundred people to vote at the Charles Siffr, the GAT, the, um, the golf, the golf course.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, with L, down, on West Boulevard, but I, um, my thing is, we got a mental health program and a financial literacy program. And I think that for me, I feel like, cause I invested in the tech company. And I'm like, we need to have more of this for our kids, in my opinion, because that's where everything's going.
Mental health or are you talking about tech?
No, the tech, the tech company, I mean, mental health and financial literacy, we do that, but we, we definitely have to lock in on that.
On the tech.
I didn't know nothing about no money until, you know, I was, I was planning in, in the league, so it was like, we don't know how to invest, we don't know what to invest in.
Right.
And you invest in the wrong thing.
These are facts.
See what I'm saying, so it's like, what's, what's good to invest in, like, people can tell, that's what the financial literacy part, mental health, we need that anyway. Cause social media and all this with these kids, got these kids going crazy.
Listen, violence in Charlotte is up.
Yeah.
And it is up among, um, our youth in particular.
Right.
A lot of the crimes fourteen, but, you know, we just, and, and the, the programs are there, like, we're putting, like, the programs for tech and stuff like that.
Yeah.
We just got to get that information out and in the right places, because a lot of the young people now, they're so interested in just making that dollar that's quick.
Yeah.
They want that bag that's easy. And so when you tell them about a program, and I know this because, listen, I got a twenty-one year old at home and I'm sorry, I'm gonna put you on blast. But, you know, if I tell you about a free training program, construction and tech, and all of these things and you're like, nah, my mind, immediately I snap, right, as a mom, you snap as a dad, you know.
Yeah.
But you got to figure out what it is, the mentality of these kids and why they don't want to go that route.
It's crazy, it's crazy, I went to Georgia Tech and there's so many, like you were saying, it's so many engineer majors, that are doing the most completely different thing in engineering after getting two, three, like you were saying. You know what I'm saying? So I'm like, it's crazy, cause I, I, I know a lot of people, like, people just, like, if you don't want to go into this path, then what do you want to do?
Well, see, well, see.
Cause it ain't no jobs available, really.
You don't find out sometimes until.
So, so, I, I give you guys a segue, so, one thing I, you know, I, my ten year old, Nadia, I got on her last week because I, she, I gave her money. So I said, I'm gonna give you some money, but I, I said, she was like, I want more, I said, this is how, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna show you how to get more. I'm, I'ma lead you, I'ma lead you to the lake, I, I, I'm not gonna, I, I'm gonna show you, I'm gonna show you how to swim, I'm gonna show you how to fish. I'm not gonna let you drown, but then at the end of the day, you got to learn how to swim by yourself, cause you ain't gonna be able to.
And you know what, I had a, a nonprofit one time and it was called Teach Me to Fish, um, and that was the very premise of it. But what you need to do, you need to find some other little black girls that, like, black, they got black girls code, they got black girls finance. So you got to get her into, you got to make her feel like she's doing something.
Yeah.
That other young ladies are doing, and then that nobody else is doing.
Right.
Then it becomes cool.
Yeah.
And she'll be, she'll, and, and all of a sudden, she'll be reading little things that this group is telling her to read, and she'll be recommending stuff for you.
Yeah, because, because, I'm a dad, so, my, my, my message is automatically gonna be uncool.
Yes.
I, 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 I get that, and so, today I gave her another five dollars and she was like, alright, I put it in there, but it was like more like a, a gift for you.
Several times before.
But like, I, I realize in life, and this is, keep this real short, but like, I realize in life, like, you know, like, you, you got to teach them at a young age, cause it, it can really sometimes get out of hand, and, and you could create a monster and you don't know how to, 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 to wheel it back in. Exactly, you know what I mean, so, and you know, and I, you know, I, you know, being a parent is not easy, it's an on the job thing, you're learning.
It's the best job I ever had, that you don't get, like, paid for. It's a great job, but it's, cause you can see the development.
But sometimes, man, you be like, okay, I have a flawed product, I need to.
How do I mold this person? Tripping, man. God, what's going on?
So, next thing, next thing we're gonna talk about is, uh, CI, CIA double A, I, I know it's supposed, they're, they're trying, they're trying to get, they're trying to get it back here to Charlotte.
Trying to get it back from Baltimore.
But, but my man Russell got the, 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 uh, the, the basketball tournament for HBCU basketball tournament coming, coming here.
Yes, I saw that.
Yes, um, and it's gonna, it's gonna be a great event, I'm probably, I'm, Russ, we got to talk, but, um.
And you know what it is, it's all about.
Look, Russ.
Yeah.
It's all about money.
So do you, so, do you think, so, question, question, question for both of you guys, I'm gonna give you guys a platform. Do you, do you, do you think CI should come back here and if it does, um, what's gonna be different, because I know before, what happened was, was that the, uh, the, the, the might was going to the games, the might was going to the parties.
Yeah.
So, um, if it comes back, how can, how can they monetize it better, or how can it be better for the city and how can it be done differently?
So, any business, you have to have a business plan.
Talk to me nice, okay.
Your business plan is flawed, you need to find a place to pivot.
Right.
So you look at why it is that people are not going to the games, are they going to the games in Baltimore now, where it is?
I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't go to the corner store in Baltimore. That's, that's, that's a whole nother story, any, 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 any spot called Lake Trout in Baltimore, do not go, it's a setup. I lived out there for twelve years, but hey.
But my point is, they know how to make things, make money that they want to make money. Real talk, this is a black event. Um, you know, they were actually taking advantage, you know, having a CIA double A surcharge on hotels and, restaurants and food and things of that nature, those were one of the things that also.
About that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I remember that.
Charlotte gonna do that, any event here.
Well, you, you know, you've got to.
Not any event.
Not any event, there.
All-Star, they was doing it?
Well, and, well, look who bring, look, who.
With a league, bring it, yeah.
That's the league.
All-Star. Who are the customers?
White people.
They, they, anyway, I can't say certain things. But anyways.
It's all, it's all love to everybody.
They know how to, if they, they know how to monetize things correctly.
Yeah.
They know how to flip it around. Now, they lost it, they can, um, make a bid for it again, when they decide that they want to bid, because, it was here in Charlotte for a long time and they weren't even offering up bids for any other cities. When they started treating them wrong, that's when they started offering up bids for it to be someplace else and that's how Baltimore got it.
Right.
So, yeah.
How did they treat them wrong? What'd they do? You can't go into it.
I, I, no, well, I, I don't know for sure and I don't want to talk about things that I know nothing about, I can admit things that I don't know a whole lot about, but I do know business. And I know that, um, if you have a business, and your business plan is not working, if you're not making a certain profit margin, if, if, you get certain complaints from certain customers, you know what to do to turn it, it can be done, I'll just say that, in my humble opinion. Well, what do I know, I just, I have an MBA and a DBA, but you know.
That's the fourth flight.
Flex is crazy right now, how do I go behind that? I can't go behind that, I was just gonna say, me being from here. I love, I mean, we love CIA double A, but this is before, like, we used to actually go to the game back in the day. Let me go to the games, and now it's just, but I still think, I hate that they left because, even people going out more than going to the games, it was still good for the Charlotte community.
Yes.
You know, I'm like, I don't know why y'all left and then y'all went to Baltimore, like, no disrespect.
Now, I went to, I went to Morgan State, I will tell you, does not.
Yeah, you was down there.
I've been in, and, and, you know, and I got, I, you know, I let my B more do things, I got, I got some good, listen, I, I've been in Baltimore for a long time, got some good people down there, I just think that there's no schools, except for, Bowie State's not even in Baltimore. Bowie State's like in, in, over there, in, over there in Laurel and, um, and other side, so, um, it just, there, that's the only school as close as, in, in that tournament. It should be down here.
And there's, there's CIA double A schools here and we have ten HBCUs in North Carolina.
Yeah, like, why would y'all move there?
It's not a, it's not a, it's not a, like, make it a MEAC tournament and, and up there, it's not, it's not what it is, but, you know, and if anything, if you're gonna, I'm doing in Balt-, my bad, Baltimore, I love you guys. Ogun, cause, you know, my, no, 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 listen, one of my closest friends, we, 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 I used to rap when I was younger, so, he actually runs the, the, uh, ceasefire campaign for the, for the, for the mayor for Baltimore. So, I know, I know, I know a lot of people in Baltimore, uh, my man Ogun, my man Ron, respect. Yeah, he'll call me tomorrow, he's like, yo, Ron, I don't know if you can, we can take care of you, like, yeah, go to Bel Air Road, go see a guy mother and go home, but anyway. But, no, but like, it just, to me, doesn't make, uh, the way, where it is doesn't make sense, I feel, and if he gonna do, if it's gonna be popping, but it would never work, put it in DC, but DC, nobody ever, there's so many spots in DC, it's gonna be.
Because it got like, um, what's in DC, like, uh, everything in DC. I can't believe they went to.
Everything's in DC.
They need to bring it back here, man.
He's being sharp, so. So we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna wrap it up soon, um, and, and, and this, so, this has been just announced today, but we're gonna do this more with, 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 uh, Ms. Vet. Yes, the county commissioner of Mecklenburg County, we're gonna do this, we're gonna make this a, uh, ongoing thing where she comes in and she, uh, talks about things that's going on.
I love it, I love rocking with you guys, I love talking with you guys, we have a lot of fun.
Thank you. Definitely, definitely, we enjoy, we, we appreciate you coming out and, and enjoying, do you have, do you have any, have any, have any parting, parting shots or parting, not, not, well, you know, parting, parting words you like to have?
Parting words, just remember the survey, please go there, that's really critically important, um, you know, if we don't know, we can't fix it. So, you know, if you're, if you reach out to any one of your representatives, and you don't have to know, oh, well, county commission does this and city council does that, we'll get you to the right people.
Okay.
Reach out to somebody, and if they're not responsive, you need to remember that when you go to vote.
I go to y'all meetings, like, for real.
That is awesome, that is what we want you to do.
I mean, everybody, Gemini, you know, Gemini and all them, yeah, them are my guys, I go to, I go to city council and county commission.
That is awesome, that is really awesome.
It's cool, it's very informative and I take notes.
That, we need that, so, yeah.
That was his flex.
That was, that was a big flex.
You ain't gotta pay for nothing, just go in, you gotta get up in the morning. Oh, yeah, they be having, but I mean, just to go in and just get the knowledge.
Get the knowledge, right, cause you know what's going on, and you get first on, you know, if there's something that can benefit you, particularly, or your business, making sure that your business is registered, with the three, um, entities for your minority, women, small business, enterprise, the county has one, the city has one, and the state has one.
Well, when we going to a meeting, when next one you going to, I'm coming, I'm for real, I'm coming to the meeting.
So, we have a, a meeting tomorrow night, as a matter of fact, the county commission does, so.
Where is it, in the, um?
At the government center.
In the government center.
Yes, always at the government center.
My man Mark gonna be there, OG, Jarrell.
That is my chair.
That's my guy, man. This is all the little kids, for real, Mark's my guy.
Mark is, Mark it, Mark for the people, that is his tagline, and he, he truly is, he's beloved. And, and he's, he, he taught me everything I know about politics, about managing, uh, campaigns, about the community, and how you, your, your platform and how to use that platform correctly, so, hats off to my, my chair, Mark Jarrell.
Awesome, we're gonna, we're gonna wrap this one up, um, I want to say thank you for coming on, uh, we'll see you in, we'll, we'll see you in a couple of months.
Yes. You can call me back anytime, call me, hey, what's popping off with, you know.
Yeah, 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 that's how we do it.
Yeah, we're gonna get his number from you, I got you.
This is gonna be an ongoing thing where we're gonna, we're gonna have updates and everything, and we're gonna, we're gonna do it for it, so, um, well, thank you guys for tuning in, thank you for being here.
Yes.
And, uh, Ant, you got anything you want to say?
No, I just really appreciate you, man, I'm district two, I think, in city, in, in city council district, in district twelve with county commission, or something like that.
No, you, you probably district two, if you're city council, city council district two.
I'm district two over there.
And I live in district two as well.
Oh, yeah, I'll be over there. I'm coming to the meeting, what time the meeting?
These are, these start at six o'clock at the government center.
Alright, season over, I'm gonna try to pull up on that.
Alright.
So, and y'all gotta see her nails, man, her nails is crazy.
Listen, my nails tech at exquisite nails, um, her name is Haley, Haley.
Haley going crazy.
Thanks.
Thank you so much.
Alright, thank you guys.
I'm still calling you miss, I'm sorry, I can't not call you.
That's alright.
Charlotte on the scene, Charlotte on the scene with county commissioner of Mecklenburg County.
Look like.
Yvette Townsend, I gotta really, I gotta really just, just dive into this, man, it's All-Star Weekend, bro. What do you feel about All-Star Weekend, like, the, the new format of the game, how you feeling about it, like, what's going, like, you know what I mean, I didn't, you know, you know, I, like, let's, let's break this All-Star Weekend down, now, 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 I'm gonna tell you right now from the jump, Kevin Hart.
Well, he was with the WNBA Women or something, they was.
No, 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 he was, so during the game, he was actually like going back and forth cracking jokes, but like, like, it, it got so like, monotone to the point where when he was sitting there, he was sitting there like, shoot it, air ball, like, they were yelling that stuff during, during.
In the All-Star game?
Yes, yes.
I mean, he's, he's a comedian, nobody be taking that shit serious, stuff serious.
Ah, you could do it, but my, but, 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 but my thing is, but my thing, but my thing is, is that, Ant, like, as an All-Star game. First of all, with Draymond, Draymond went on a rant, you heard what Draymond said?
About, um, what he was saying about, um, the game itself or the weekend or something?
No, so basically, he was like, basically saying, you have people that have worked this, worked their butts off to get to the All-Star game, and get there, whatever, and then what happened was, is that, you know, um, now the rising stars get to compete, be on the same platform as guys that have, you know, so like, he, he didn't, you know, he wasn't, he wasn't, he wasn't proud about, and then, you know, like, I guess they put this format together so that people could start playing defense, but were they really playing defense?
Bro, listen.
Okay, talk to me, okay, alright, alright, alright.
And I saw Draymond get pushed back, cause they like, bro, you just on, and I love Draymond, don't get me wrong, but he getting pushed back, cause they like, you only own there because you play for the Warriors, you know what I'm saying, and all the other time, no, it's real, that's what they saying, I don't, I, I love Draymond. He helped, he helped me with my first podcast.
Okay, okay, okay.
Real talk, told me how, you know, but, I mean, I saw that and I was like, he entitled to his opinion, but it don't even matter, like, I didn't watch one event. I didn't watch the dunk contest, I watched a little bit of the three point contest, but I ain't watched none of that, I never watched the game anymore, I don't watch the skills challenge, I don't rock the, I, usually I watch the rookie sophomore game and I don't really watch none, I don't even like going out there.
What a skill challenge, the skill challenge was funny off the rip because, uh, Chris Paul and Victor tried to, you know, so, so, so what they do with.
I saw it, yeah.
But they want to shoot them, they was trying to make it off of time, and they started just throwing the ball to the side, they not shooting the ball.
It's so much weird, it, it's not like, cause I remember like the All-Star game, bro.
Then they wanted to argue with the judges afterwards.
But Chris gonna do that, Chris is gonna do that, shout out to Chris, Chris gonna do that.
Chris is arguing with the judges.
Bro, I was like, like, I would just be looking at it like, I remember being like eight, nine years old, and like, the All-Star game was like, in December, they talking about the All-Star game.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, right.
Cause it's in mid-February.
It's coming, it's a big thing.
Yeah, like, eight years old, miking them with the jerseys on, they kind of had some dope jerseys this time, for real, for real, but, um.
The best ones was the ones when, I think when they were in Phoenix, when they had the, uh.
When they had the sun and all that on, yeah, that shit was crazy.
That was the best jersey, that was the best, three hour jersey, that was crazy, damn, damn, yeah.
I got the, I got the blue mic one at the crib.
Oh, word.
Yeah, I want the white mic one, don't worry about it. No, but I mean, it's just, it's just like, it's just, it's, it's not what it used to be, and they're trying to fix it, but I think they over trying to fix.
Over trying to fix it, doing too much.
Like, they, they trying to be so creative, like, I'm like, okay, Matt McClain won three years in a row dunk contest or something. I don't even know, I think Dane won the three point contest?
Uh, no, Dane lost, uh, Dane lost, um.
Who won the three point, who won three point? Who won the three-point? Who won the three-point contest?
Uh, uh, Tyler Hero.
Oh, Tyler won it.
Tyler won, Tyler won, yeah.
Tyler's a volume shooter, so that's dope for him.
Tyler, Tyler Hero.
Like, he, 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 he take a lot of crazy shots, but he make a lot of them. So for him to win a three-point contest, he really proved.
Tyler Hero, then it was Matt, Matt. Skills challenge was, uh, Cleveland.
Darius and, um, Donovan. Yeah, I saw, I saw some clips. I just don't have no, I didn't even, it's no interest in it. Ever since the, the, probably the best dunk contest ever that don't nobody really wanna bring up. Zach Levine and Aaron Gordon.
I think that was, I think that was one, I think that was second.
I remember watching it. I was like, this is amazing. Like, nobody even talking about it.
I think that, I think that slam dunk contest was second, second to, um, second to, uh, Vince Carter. I honestly do think that.
Yeah, but they was doing the, well.
They had a duel.
The feeling of that, when Vince did that.
I knew, I knew where I was.
I was at the homie crib. Homie had, um, I was what, fourteen, fifteen? We was at a, we had like a, a kickback, a summer party or something. To my birthday. And, um, yeah, that was different, bro. But. I ain't gonna lie, that, Aaron, that stuff they was doing, Aaron Gordon and, um, Zach Levine. I was like, if they was doing his, them dunks in two thousand, Vince won the one. Real tall. Bro had the mascot on the hoverboard.
He put it, he put it through his.
Come on, bro. I ain't never seen no shit, stuff like that, bro.
Yo, listen, listen. But Vince, 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 Vince was different.
And, and at the time.
I still think people talk about, who's your best all-time slam dunk contestant of all time? A person you think is the best in it. I'm, I'm gonna tell you who nobody never mentions. I thought he was the best slam dunker of all time, in game and slam dunk contest, but just never won the dunk contest. But who, who, who is yours?
Who I think? I think Mike, because Mike looked different than everybody in the air. Like, that hang time and all that, like, he ain't just dumping from the free throw line. Put the arm back. I can't explain what it was like for, to see Michael Jordan as a kid, bro. It's not like you, I can just, you, LeBron, okay, cool. Kobe, cool, bro. I love him. They great. But I'm like, man, it was just different when Mike came on TV. Anytime he was on TV, it was never a time where he wasn't like impressive. Like, it was never a time where he wasn't Mike. To us, to me.
So I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna tell you, I thought was the best dunker in game and best slam dunk, one of the best dunkers in the slam dunk contest. And they never won it though.
Oh, and it, I think I know what you're gonna say. I swear to God, I knew you was gonna say that.
Kemp, son. They don't respect the Rain Man, son. And.
Seattle does. They love him.
Yo, Shawn Kemp was a, was power and every, finesse everything. And then he was still dunking on you. He would still give you the, like he did a Chris Gatling. But even in the slam dunk contest. Yeah, he, even in slam dunk contest, he was still giving work. Like Shawn Kemp, like, people don't respect Shawn Kemp. Like, you got your Dominique Wilkins. I seen like Harold Minor had a good year one time.
Baby Jordan.
You call him baby Jordan. Yo, out the blue, he's with the Miami Heat, right? He had Harold Minor had it, won one year. Kobe won it. JR Riden won it. He's a, JR Riden was one of the first to do.
East Bay. That was like the greatest dunk ever back then, like ninety-four.
JR Riden had it one time. Um, then you had Jason Richardson. He was cool.
Jason Rich had a crazy dunk.
Yeah, he was cool. Um, I thought, I thought, n- n- another person that, that should have won it. And then Dee Brown did that BS dunk, cause that was trash to me. And I'm sorry, Dee, don't, don't get mad at me. I thought Larry Johnson should have won a slam dunk. Larry Johnson. Was killing that dunk contest.
Like on some power dunking. And I think, I think that, that dunk contest was, was in Charlotte.
It was. They, they, listen, listen. And Rex Chapman was in the, was in, was in. Listen, but like when Larry, listen, they used Larry's, they used Larry's dunk in, in, in NBA inside stuff when it was coming on all the time. It was at the end. It was like, yo, five, four, three, two, one. They showed Larry's dunk.
I ain't gonna lie, bro. I'm gonna keep it a bean.
They ain't show Dee Brown's dunk.
I'm gonna keep it a bean, bro. When the Hornets first came to Charlotte, bro. And they had LJ, Alonzo, Mooney, Dale Curry and Kelly Tripuka back in the day, like.
How, how, how you pronounce that? Kelly, Kelly? This is, this is a different type of name, Sean.
Bro, the starter jackets, you just had to be there, bro.
Did you have a starter jacket that went down, with the zipper down the middle?
I had the pouch with the zipper right here. I had the Panthers one too. Stop playing.
Mama Angie had you right.
Get good money at the airport, mama.
Talk to me nice.
It was cool, man. And it was a great time. LJ had the go-to grandma, the React Juice con. Come on now.
So you know what? I ain't gonna lie, son. So I had, I had the, I had the, I ain't had the React Juice. I had the Tarmaxx.
I know the ones before.
The Tarmaxx was after.
Was after? The black ones?
Yeah, the, the Reacts is the ones that had, that had the juice. I had the Tarmaxx on. I had the Tarmaxx, but I was crazy, cause I was a little older. So I was rocking the black Tarmaxx, the all-black joints, cross colors. So we had like yellow. We was rocking Jabo's with it.
I ain't gonna lie, bro. Every day we got, we got the starter pull over the Hornets joint. Everybody had one.
Get the dude in the yellow, the, 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 the yellow Jabo's on. So he right there. With the, with the, with the red champion, honey, son. Crazy, son. That's how we did it though, man. We, we, we was still official though. We was in Far Rock, walking around with the joints on. We had Timbs, the base. Yo, man, we had to get it away. We had to get it, man.
The Yellow Goose like Fredrick Star.
Yo, 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 my, my man, my, my man, my man Gus said, fun fact, Charlotte Hornets led the NBA merchandise sales for seven, several seasons back in the nineties.
That's a fact, bro. That's a fact.
Gus up here.
Them starter jackets was crazy. And them jerseys.
Yo, Gus, I'm, yo, Gus, I'm about to, I'm about to, I'm about to make you the, I'm about to make you the, uh, the, the, uh.
Hey, nah, you know Gus gotta be like the, uh, like the, um, he gotta be like.
Survey says.
Yeah, we need you, Gus.
Yeah. So, 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 at the end of the day, so the All-Star, I saw, I saw your boy, uh, your boy, uh, 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 on Oklahoma, on Oklahoma Thunder. The man came in looking like a polar bear, son. Nigga, he had the brother, the brother, the good brother had the, 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 the fur on with the fur pants.
That's Lil Bro, bro.
Yeah, he got your number too, son. Got you in the ball now.
They ain't just give the number to anybody. That's my team. I got them going to the front. I'm, I'm rooting for the Thunder. For three years. I love everybody there still. And, uh, Shay is my MVP. I love the young players. I love their team. I love the coach. I love the gym, everybody. Yeah, man. But yeah, yeah, Shay, man.
What's it like being out of Oklahoma? I went there, I went there, I think I went there, I went to Broken Bow one time.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's a city.
Yeah, I went to Broken Bow, uh, I stayed in a cabin out there. I saw a cabin. It said, and, and so the store next to the cabin, there was, there's a whole bunch of, uh, cause people from Dallas go to Oklahoma. So, so I was at a cabin, family, and I looked out and it said, I ain't gonna lie, and I sl- I lie to you not, this is, this is a true story. The, the store, the store said, the store had a sign that said weed and liquor.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's for real.
Yeah, yeah, it is real. I saw it.
Like, it's like, in Oklahoma City, bro, it's like a liquor store every corner. It's shit crazy. And it's like, it's crazy, bro.
Nah, yeah, yeah, you good, you good. Mama Love got a scare right now. So we trying to get.
Nah, but, uh, nah, I love Oklahoma City. It was, it was different, man, cause, but it was cool, cause I was like daddy mode then. So all I used to do was play basketball and be at the crib. You know what I mean? I just had, we had just had Kaden. So I would just be at the crib or I'm at the gym. It was nothing else to do unless, you know, it's a couple of really, they have great steak restaurants there. It's kinda underrated.
My dad, my dad loves the steak out there.
Yeah, they got great, cause you know, you know what I'm saying? And then like, uh, we had one hookah spot we used to go to, and that's all I needed. I ain't go to the club. I mean, I knew a couple of, uh, homies that was DJs. I used to go pull up for like birthdays and stuff, but I never really went out in Oklahoma City. It was just nothing else to do. So it was like, I was playing my best basketball, cause I wasn't worried about nothing else. You know what I'm saying?
Focus.
Focus a lot, damn. Bro, I love Oklahoma City though, to this day, for real. You could duck off, oh shit, my bad.
No, you good.
You could duck off, but then you can also like go to like a really dope restaurant.
Well, shout out, shout out Oklahoma, man.
Get you a steak and a glass of wine.
I was out there. I, I loved the drive out there and I had a good time. I was on a horse for like, like a whole, like three hours. That, that's where the Choctaw Indians are from. It's beautiful out there. It's beautiful land out there, man. You know what I mean? Uh, I enjoyed myself out there, so.
I'm gonna tell you something dope before you finish. We used to have like the Thunder Awards. So like, the first year I was there, KD got it. And then the next year, KD left. Russ got it. But they show so much love to the Native Americans out there, man. You know what I mean? Like, on some real stuff, bro. It's super dope. And I made a lot of great friends, Native American homies. And they put me on a lot of the, you know, like, a lot of the ge- uh, geography and a lot of the, the history. Of, you know, like Oklahoma and Oklahoma City and Oklahoma in general, with how, you know, they got there and, you know. And it's, it's super dope, bro. They give them so many, they got so many awards and I hung out with so many of them, man. Like, I really, I really. I love Oklahoma City, bro. Like, for real.
That's what's up, man. It's, it's good to have that experience and, and have those, uh, worldly experiences and, and appreciate, and people that appreciate you.
Yeah, man. I just had to show them love on that, cause I, I love being out there.
So, so we got SGA's, you know, outfit.
He was fly, bro. Don't listen to him.
Like an apex.
You know I like that.
He like, yeah, man, he was, yeah, he like an apex predator, man. If you throw him out there in Antarctica, son, he, he, you, you gotta run from him, son. He, he's grabbing fish.
Shay, talk crazy to him when you see this.
Yo, but I can't talk, cause I was wearing Jabo's. So.
I was too.
Yo, so, so, um, another thing that happened is, this weekend, and I'm, I'm gonna touch on it real quick. They had a Saturday Night Live, uh, uh, fiftieth anniversary.
Saw that.
Yes, and, um, Eddie Murphy, you know, usually doesn't get, get in on that. He got in and he was imitating Tracy Morgan and it was funny as hell. Um, I wanna say, uh, you know, like Saturday Night Live, you know, like, um. I guess there's generations to this, this stuff, but like, the way, I guess the shows that you watch now, and maybe you watch Power or whatever, or whatever you watch now. Saturday Night Live was like that for our parents and maybe when I was young. Used to wait up late night. And I, and you know, I'm older, but I used to wait up, so things, I used to wait, I used to wait, I used to wait up late night for Friday night videos. Because Michael Jackson was popping in eighty-four, eighty-five. I'm, and I was like five, six years old. So I used to wait for Michael's activity, but you used to watch Miami Vice, stuff like that. Miami Vice.
Come on, late.
Saturday Night Live. And, and if you're a wrestling fan, Saturday Night's the main event.
What was it? WWE? He was after.
So, so you know, so, but like, you know, it was, it was, it was good. Uh, I, I implore you guys to catch the recording of it and watch it because.
It's on YouTube, probably.
Yeah, check it out. It was cool. It was cool. So I just wanted, Ant, I gotta, you know, after, after the, after the All-Star Weekend, you know, and. I thought, I wanna say Rafael Sadiq looked great. I, I, Rafael Sadiq looks phenomenal for his age. Um, I wanted to put that out there. Brother, you look, you look awesome. I think the halftime show at the All-Star game was better than the Super Bowl.
I'm a Rafael Sadiq fan.
But then they had Invogue, they had Too Short. They had, they had some good people during halftime.
Shout out to Too Short getting the opportunity, man. He deserved that, man.
Man, brother, you was out in the eighties. You was out, and, 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 and I think somebody asked, it was like, who you refer, E forty or Too Short? E forty is cool, but Too Short is the culture.
Hey, Too Short, I hope you watching this, man. I think Mr. Fab be watching Too Short. Shout out to both of them. Me and Too Short, man, when I was playing for the Warriors, bro.
Talk to me nice.
I ain't gonna say that crazy.
Talk to me nice.
I would just say this, OG used to put the homie, like, what he be talking about? He really liked that. He was putting the homies on. Yo, fella, come here. I got something for you over here.
Short dog.
Too Short was like that, man. He was cool as hell. He was the first person I seen with a, that's why I got a challenger. When they first came out, he was the first one with it. I saw he had a great challenger and I was like, I'm getting one of them.
Get it. We said, getting, getting what the getting is good. Don't you tell me.
Was cool, man. Short was cool. He's come to all our games, him and E forty, Fab, Fab, Mama, rest in peace, Mama Fab.
Well, you know what? After, after Steph, Steph hit the half-court shot, Fab dapped him. Like, he went and dapped Mr. Fab. They didn't know it was Mr. Fab. He went and dapped Fab, you know what I mean? Shout out to Mr. Fab. Um, did you see the play where Kyrie tried to shake, uh, Victor?
No, I didn't even watch it, bro.
You got it. Yo, bro, you got.
What did he do? He blocked his shot or something?
Nah, man, he did a dribble, then he brought it back, then he stopped dribbling, then he walked, took two. I don't know if that was a travel. For the fans, we're gonna ask you, is that a travel? We're gonna find the footage for that. I wanna know if that's a travel or not. Kyrie, and never disrespect Kyrie, Kyrie is the truth. But I didn't know if that was a travel or not. I, I had to get back on that, so. But, um, halftime show was great, um, for the All-Star game. Now. We're not gonna be too lo- long winds tonight. I wanted, uh, Mama Love, you know, we got, she got, she, she gotta get home and we gotta do a little thing. But we gonna, we gonna definitely discuss the suit both there again. I gotta dissect it. So. Yeah, yeah, like, she's like, oh. So, it, the All-Star game definitely needs to be revamped.
It's terrible.
But, um, it's, it's.
Everything's bad. I love watching three-point contests. They just shooting.
So, 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 uh. A lot of revelations have come out. So Drake dropped a new album with Party Next Door. And, um, you know, Drake getting back to the music, you know, talking at Party Lit stuff and, yeah, so. My thing is, is that after a full week of the Super Bowl halftime show being over, I know people were tired, exhausted, talking about it. How do you truly feel about the situation now, knowing with the symbolism and everything else that happened with the Super Bowl and everything else with the show and everything?
Oh, with the Kendrick? I think it was dope as hell. Like, I mean, this is what it's supposed to, like, if, if Chris Brown came out there and just did that. I'd be like, that's weird. Like, he going to see him dance. Everybody went to see him dance and do all the things. So like, with Kendrick, it's like, I expected that. And like, I'm gonna tell you this too, bro. Cause everybody all like, yeah, it's so many symbolic things, like a bunch of symbols. I'm like, bro, y'all have not been listening to this dude, bro. He been like this since like two thousand ten or two thousand twelve or something. He been like this. Like, I'm not surprised that what he did, the symbolism in the thing with Drake, with the eight minor chain and all that. I'm like, I ain't surprised at that. Like, dude from Compton, bro, and he really could have been do, he did it twenty sixteen in the BET cipher. When he said, um, and nothing's been the same since they dropped Control and tucked the sensitive rapper back in his pajama clothes. I'm like, he been talking crazy.
Say it again, say it again, what you saying?
See, you wanted me to get bars. It's crazy. And nothing's been the same since I dropped Control and tucked the sensitive rapper back in his pajama clothes. Joke's on you. High five. I'm bulletproof. See what I'm talking about? No, this is real shit. I mean, he been talking crazy to these people.
So, 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 so you know.
I'm not surprised.
So you know, you know, Ant, I, I love your opinion, man. You know, like, that's why we, you know, we have a, so I would say the symbolism is good. You need, um, protests at tough times in life, and it's important to have that. The problem is with me is that when I grew up, I never had, when I went back, it was to catch something, but I never had to go back for a whole song. I'm from a different era.
You had to go back for Not Like Us?
I had to go back because.
And I'm tired of that song.
The verse, you gotta understand, listen, this is what paradise life relaxing, black Latino and Anglo-Saxon. Imani exchanged the range cash, lost tribe of Shabazz, free a las, brand new whipster crashed and we laughing, the illa path. The villa houses for the crew, how we do, trees for breakfast, dime sexes and bent stretches. I didn't have, I didn't have to go back to hear the metaphors when I was coming up. So when, so, so.
It's a lot of metaphors in there.
Yo, so when you, so when you come to me and you're telling me that I didn't get it or I'm not deep enough. I grew up in the era of Biggie, Jay-Z and Nas. I grew up in the era of Big Pun. I grew up in the era of DMX. I grew up in the era of Tupac. I grew up in the era of where you had to rewind tapes to go back, cause you missed a bar or metaphor.
You don't feel like that?
For you, so, let me say one thing, this is, this is my public service announcement, so, for, so for all you want, you young, you young people, or people are saying that I'm not woke or don't understand a message, I've been dissect, I, 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 I've been looking at messages and, and dissecting them for years, cause I'm a hip hop fan. The problem is, is that with Kendrick, I think it might be his voice, his cadence. Even, even the lyrics, it's not, nothing to really dissect, there's no big three, it's just big me. That's not a metaphor, it's not, it, it's not nothing to go back on, it's, it's a, it's a, it's just a saying. You see what I'm saying? And I, I, I just, like, like, I had to go back when Biggie was like, money and blood don't mix, like two and no chick, find yourself in serious, number eight, never keep your weight on you, those cats squeeze your guns don't hold. Number nine should have been number one, no me, if you ain't getting bags, data, you see him?
Yeah.
I know my lyrics, I know them, and what you're listening to is what my era created.
Here you go.
And what I wanna tell you is that I don't have to go back and decipher nothing, because I know wherever I come from, and I know what I like. It's like my uncle coming to me and telling me Rakim was the greatest, I gotta respect that, but I, but I go back and listen. You see what I'm saying?
I mean, I respect all that, like, my dad will be like, Curtis Blow is like the best rapper ever.
Nah, he's bugging, your dad, dad's bugging, I love him deaf, you know what I mean?
But I can't argue with him, cause, I can't argue with him, cause it's like when rap started, you know what I'm saying?
I get it, I get it, what do you, what do you, first time you heard it?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it was, well.
But, but, but you have to understand that. He's bugging, but you have to understand the difference between lyricism and a song. And my thing is, is that I feel as if we, in our culture, didn't do a good job of handing the, the, the torch down to the young culture right now, because they're looking at this as, as, as a, as deciphering, and it's not deciphering metaphors and hip, and, and, and like, like you, we had so many artists that we had to de- dissect, and it's not their fault, it's our fault. I take responsibility for myself for not talking to you or giving you the true, the true culture of hip hop. And I failed, because my thing is, is that when I hear a Nas, when, that, we, we, we had a, we had a way better Nas in my era. We had a way better Kendrick in my era, Nas been doing that for years, Common been doing it for years. Outkast been doing it for years, breaking down barriers and putting and bringing up the culture. Kendrick ain't the first to do it, he's not the nicest or the last to do it.
He's this generation's version of it, bro.
Not, J. Cole is, and J. Cole rhymes way better, and I have to reverse.
J. Cole not really a big metaphor guy though, he can really rap.
Eh, eh, talk crazy.
Give me a voice, I'm gonna give you a verse.
Yo, what? I don't have to, I, I don't have, listen, 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 if you just said J. Cole's not a metaphor guy.
I'm, I'm saying, he's not a huge. He can rap.
Kendrick, Kendrick, Kendrick cannot spit like J. Cole, bro, no way, no how, J. Cole can survive in that era. Not in, this era, he was smoking, and you know what, I'mma tell you right now, I respect your opinion, but I'mma tell you right now, I have to go back to hear J. Cole's stuff. But J. Cole dumps, dumbs it down so easily.
That's what I'm saying.
But he's still nice.
He's, he's super nice, I'm just saying, like, Kendrick, once upon the, once upon a time, most of us didn't, like, when he went into all of that, bro, come on, bro. That's like one of the best verses in the last ten years, like how he broke that shit down.
Listen.
That was the ultimate metaphor.
Cole said.
You not a, you, you not a colleague, you a colonizer.
This is, this is how, this is how cold dummies are down for, Kobe like, yo, the good news is, you came a long way. The sad news is, you went the wrong way. And that's just basics, you gotta understand.
But he can rap, he liked that, but he, that's not like a.
No, 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 I'm, I'm, I'm trying to tell you.
It was hard, like.
It's him dumbing it down, that's a lifelong lesson.
I don't, I don't, I don't disagree.
Listen, 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 I'mma tell you something right now, listen, listen, listen.
Bro, broke, broke Drake down to the point where he trying to sue the people with that metaphors and then changes to all that, like, and he went all the way in.
Let me ask you a question, who's a better MC at the purest form, and I'm be real with you?
I wanna hear this.
I want, I want, at the purest form, the bar, all the singing and stuff, bar for bar, I'm gonna be real with you.
I'm listening.
Who, who has better metaphors, Drake or Kendrick?
They two different people.
No, but Drake can spit though, when Drake spits, who got better metaphors?
You know what?
If you gotta think about it, that means your man ain't doing his job.
I, I'mma get at the Kendrick, you go, go back and listen to To Pimp a Butterfly. Like, every song is, he got a song called Mortal Man with Pop in the, um, interlude, and he got a song called, um, The Black of the Berry, Black of the Berry, listen to them two songs, bro, and, uh, shit, he got a few of them on there, but listen to Mortal Man and listen to Black of the Berry.
I think, I think, I think, well, I think what messes everything, I, I think, I think you're, we're, you're entitled to your opinion, I'm entitled to my opinion.
Nah, that's cool.
I think, I think, no, but see, the thing is that we're civil about it, the fans will tell you, the fans will tell you, you're not smart enough. Or you, it went over your head, and that's an insult.
You really don't like the people saying.
I don't like that, disrespectful, disrespectful.
Woojae said they have online.
If you being Far Rock or you being Linden Boulevard until it went over my head, your koofi is off. Koofi is gone.
You can't do that. They don't know what that mean, that's a metaphor, yeah, we know what's going on.
It's a metaphor, it's a simile, you gotta take it off, you know what I mean, so, but nah, so, yeah, we been, so, we been, uh, so we, so, okay, so we, we're, we're off that, so we're gonna, this is a short one tonight, we had a long night tonight, we're gonna wrap it up soon. Um, I do wanna say, um, that I think the problem with society right now is, is that, um, every, everybody is not entitled to their own opinion, I feel people wanna get on social platforms and say that you have to think the way I think, and I, and I love, the beauty of the world is, is that I don't think like you, you don't think like me. I can't do what you do, you can't do what I do, we can't do what Mama Love does, and I will tell everybody out there to stop criticizing people for what they can do and cheer them on for what they can do. Um, I think it's important to acknowledge everybody's individuality in life, that's important. You know what I'm saying, and, um, as you go through life, and you go through this journey in life, you're gonna meet people who are not like you, but guess what? They're gonna give you something so special, because you're gonna have a, a different perspective on life, just dealing with them or talking to them, or even having a conversation. Or even just doing an activity with them, we don't all gotta be alike, and this social media thing wants us all to think the same way. What happened to the power of debate, to the, the power of competition, the power of doing things differently, you know, or, cause if I do things like you, you do the, we're robots, there's no individuality.
No creativity.
No, no creativity at all, and you can't learn from each other.
Copy, cookie cutters.
Yep, so.
Eh, yeah.
Go ahead, no, brother, the brother, speak, please.
Well, I ain't, and not to cut you off, bro, but I ain't with none of that, bro, like, I literally raised my children, all four of them four different ways, cause I don't want them to feel like they have to be like somebody else, you ain't gotta be me. Don't be like me, be better than me.
Yes.
You know what I'm saying?
Yes.
And that's why I love the fact that their mothers are like, we like-minded when it come to that. You know what I'm saying?
Loving it.
So like, I love it, but the problem is, I feel like, is that social media is telling people that if you're not like this person or that person, you ain't nothing. So when people go out their way, if you look at all the, like, I, I really respect a lot of the like, like the digital creators now. Like, um, the young people, like Drewski, like some, a lot of these like influencers or taste makers, whatever they call. Because a lot of them had to find a way through social media, and it's like the new wave of how to make money.
I agree.
People making eight figures and stuff like that, like, I'm proud of you for that, I'm not gonna hate, and a lot of people like, comedians was really not liking that at first.
Nah, nah, nah.
Because they like, why do you get seventy thousand dollars a month?
Right.
And I can't get a show no more, so they go talk shit on, about, you know what I'm saying? And I'm like, that, that, that's what we had with it, I can't control when I was born. So like, with a lot of guys, like, even athletes do this, and I never did this. I understand that I was born in nineteen eighty-five, I took advantage of me being how old I was. Now, that's like me talking junk about a young guy that's make, finna make three hundred and forty million dollars over six years.
Yeah.
I can't be mad, like, I can't control the economy, I control, I can't control, um, the salary cap.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying, I can't, I couldn't control it when I was playing, I can't control it now, it's supposed to go up.
Yeah.
I can't control the TV deal.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? So like, why be mad at them, they supposed to do that.
Yeah, that's, um.
So that's just like society in itself.
Yeah.
You know what I mean, and I just, I don't let nobody sit around me and hate on no young kid.
Instead of, instead, instead of cheering on the youngins and, and, and being happy for them doing better, you're mad because you didn't get to do it.
Why would you do that? You never know, like, we supposed to pass up a time, we supposed to pass a torch.